And Fredericksburg on 94.9, Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech. Welcome to News Hour.
The Roanoke City Council informal session for April the 4th, 2022 is hereby called to order, and I will ask our deputy clerk, Ms. Cecilia Webb, to please call the road.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And I call Ms. President. And welcome, everybody, to our first session today of a long day planned. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel 3 on Thursday, Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. That's a new change there, okay. We'll go down to our next item. We're going to talk about items for action. There's a communication from my office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the selection of candidates to be interviewed for the interim city council member position pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So, second.
All right. Madam, madam clerk, please call the road.
Mr. Cobb?
Here. I mean, I.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. All right. Are there any items on the 2:00 PM council docket requiring any further discussion or clarification, or any additions or deletions? All right, hearing none, we'll now move down to our briefings, and I'm pleased to recognize our city manager to lead us through this session.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have two briefings today, our regular briefings. The first will be the briefing on the budget as we get quite close to the submission of the FY '23 budget, and that will be followed by our monthly update on the gun violence prevention framework. And so, we will begin with the budget briefing, and I'm just going to quickly identify what we're going to talk about. All this should look pretty familiar to you since we try to follow the same format. There's one addition to the format this time, so there's going to be four things, four major things that we're going to cover in the presentation. One of those is an update on each of our enterprise funds. There are no real big changes in any of those. We don't have any requests for changes in fees or any charges or those types of things. This is mostly to give you kind of a further view from what we had at the budget planning retreat of how these enterprise funds are performing, as well as some of the challenges that confront each of them, mostly related to COVID as we move forward. So, there'll just be quick overviews of those enterprise funds. Then we will, of course, update you on the FY '22 budget as well. Then we'll move into what the majority of the presentation is about, which is where we are in the FY '23 budget development and our next steps and where we are in balancing. So, that's going to be the presentation, not quite as much as we had last time, but there's quite a bit of information in here with it as well. So, with that, Paul, start us off.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Whiteboyd, members of city council. For today's briefing, we'd like to give you a brief update on the status of the enterprise funds, as Mr. Cowell had mentioned. An enterprise fund is a portion of the government that runs somewhat like a business because it has its own specially dedicated revenues. In the case of the Stormwater Fund and the Parking Fund, they are fully self-supporting and do not rely on any funding from the General Fund. The Civic Facilities Fund, which is mainly the Burglin Center, does rely on a subsidy from the General Fund for covering its debt service, as well as some level of operating subsidy. We only have a few slides on each fund, and we don't plan on covering these in great detail, but if you do have specific questions, we do have each manager here in the chamber to answer questions you may have. We also may decide at a later time to do special more in-depth briefings regarding one or all of the enterprise funds if there are important issues discussed in the future. We'll start off with the Stormwater Fund, and I'd like to remind council the fee schedule increase that was proposed during the last year's budget. For fiscal year '23, the rate will increase 15 cents per billing unit and will continue to increase over the next six years at a gradual rate. For fiscal year '23 budget, this is equating to an increase in revenues of approximately $1.1 million. This is mostly due to the rate increase, but is also due in part to an increase in development of more impervious services. Half of the $1.1 million increase, or $550,000, will go towards operations, and half will go towards capital projects in fiscal year '23. Fiscal year '22 will have no contribution towards capital projects other than bond funds that were issued due to current funding constraints. As we issue more bonds for capital projects, the debt service for those bonds will also see a slight increase. We do plan to have a pause on the originally planned issuance in fiscal year '22 due to supply chain delays. Instead of issuing $3 million in bonds in fiscal year '22, we will issue $2 million and delay $1 million to increase the fiscal year '23 issuance up to $4 million. After fiscal year '23, we'll continue with our regular schedule of $3 million each year. The annual operating funds of about $500,000 will go towards working with the USGS on evaluating rainfall flow and water quality information, cooperative work with Virginia Tech, as well as work with the University of Maryland Baltimore County on evaluating PCBs within our watershed. There is no shortage of work for the Stormwater Fund as the current backlog of projects, including the downtown project, is currently at $322 million.
Paul?
Yes, sure.
I have a question about that. I realize we're talking in today's dollars, and it's difficult to go back and compare, but do you know what the total estimate was before we started the Stormwater Fund?
The total budget for the Stormwater Fund?
Well, we had a backlog of projects, which is why we started, and there was a number associated with that, how much we thought all those projects were going to cost. And as I say, I realize that was, you know, several years ago in terms of the relative value, but I just wondered if you know how that compares. Or maybe another way to ask it is, do you know what percentage of the projects that were identified then have been completed so far?
Yeah, and I may call on our Stormwater Manager for that question.
Well, and if not, I'd appreciate if you could get back to us, but I mean, if you can certainly do that. If you have an answer or approximation, that'd be great, but.
Yeah, I think what we would do is provide you kind of, since the utility was established, what, how many capital, what the value of the capital projects have been that have been put in place, because actually, in some ways, this number is actually increased in backlogs because along the way, we've also been doing some additional analysis like we did in downtown. For example, we knew there were drainage issues, obviously, in downtown. We didn't know the magnitude of those. The study is done and was presented to you all several months ago, and we now have a dollar amount to attach to that. But yeah, I think the easiest would be to provide you kind of an overview of, since the utility was put in place, what's the value of those capital projects and what were those capital projects, and stuff as well. And we can certainly do that.
Right.
For the Civic Facilities Fund, which consists mainly of the Burglin Center, is the operating subsidy provided by the General Fund is increasing by $37,000, which is the same amount of reduction in debt service. Since the General Fund provides all debt service funding for the Civic Center, this means that the amount funded by the General Fund is essentially going to be level for fiscal year '23. The fund is expected to increase over fiscal year '22 levels by about 1.9 million, or a total of about $12.5 million for the fund. This increase in revenues reflects a cautiously optimistic return of shows to the Burglin Center in fiscal year '23. It has been noted, however, that entertainment and sports industries are still trying to get back to pre-COVID levels, and artists are just now planning tours. We are grateful that for fiscal year '22, the shuttered venue grant has assisted Burglin Center reopening, paying for personnel and operating expenses, and offsetting expenses for some scheduled debt-funded capital projects. Total funds received from this grant are about $8 million.
Let me say I'm pleased to hear that, and I want to recognize Robin Shawn with us this morning. It's good to see you, the manager over there.
The Parking Fund has seen a rebound of activities following the decline that occurred as a result of COVID-19. Revenues in fiscal year '23 are anticipated to increase 4.7% or about $126,000. We continue to see an increase in daily activities, as well as an increase in garage occupancy for monthly parkers. In addition to increasing revenues, we are also seeing expenditure savings. The Parking Fund has not had a significant bond-funded garage project in a while, and we have paid off some of our older bond issuances. This is resulting in savings of about $196,000 in fiscal year '23 for debt service. We are also going to see a reduction in the management fee of $36,000 due to garage automation. Lastly, we anticipate utility savings of about $47,000 due to the conversion of LED lighting. All of these changes have allowed us to increase our reserves towards capital maintenance projects within the parking facilities. We are fortunate to be in a position to cash fund maintenance activities and avoid the issuance of additional bonds. The last conditional assessment was done in December of 2019, which identified $1.5 million of maintenance needs. Completed projects include the elevator upgrade at Church Avenue Garage, equipment replacement at Towers and Elmwood Park garages, and, as I mentioned, the switching to the LED lighting, of which five of seven garages have been completed. Planned future capital maintenance projects includes power washing and painting at Towers and Center in the Square garages, which includes the items that you see there, which is interior walls, stairwells, columns, and ceilings. The future of the Parking Fund seems good, although we'll want to keep a watchful eye on the impacts of COVID-19. We did lose two significant monthly customers who took their workforce remote. If this turns out to be an evolving trend, we'll want to be sure to react with the appropriate measures on the expenditure side. All garages are scheduled for preventative maintenance. In fiscal year '23, there will be five, there will be a new five-year structural repair plan developed, which will likely drive the prioritization and order of upcoming repairs. By focusing on preventative maintenance, we will hopefully be reducing our reactive unplanned maintenance activities overall. Any residual year-end funds that are a result of excess revenues over expenditures will be put towards the list of maintenance activities. One such example of this is the LED lighting upgrades at Towers Garage, which should be finalized at the end of fiscal year '22. One other item on the horizon is an RFP, or Request for Purchase, for the next management contract that will decide which company will help us run the garage operations. And at this time, I will turn it over to Amelia, who will cover fiscal year '22 activities.
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to start off this portion with an update on the performance of fiscal year '22, and very happy to say that we are continuing to see local taxes perform ahead of target. Last month, we shared with you that we were 6.2% ahead of target. This month, we are 8.4% ahead of target as of the end of February. This is driven primarily by the performance of sales tax, prepared food and beverage tax, and transient occupancy tax at this time. In total, our revenues have increased approximately 12.4% compared to the end of February of 2021. Of this total $16.7 million, local taxes comprise about 12.9 million of that. And again, that is real estate sales tax, prepared food and beverage, business license, and transient occupancy tax as the drivers of that increase. Other revenues at this time have also increased about 8.4%, and that's driven primarily by the timing of collection of revenues from the Commonwealth. Expenditures have also increased as we expected, driven by compensation, as well as the formula-driven transfers that we are very familiar with, as well as capital projects, debt service, and expenditures related to CSA. And on a monthly basis, as you know, we continue to monitor all of these expenditures to ensure that we are staying abreast of the status of them and what is necessary. As we turn our attention to our dashboards, first we look at our revenue dashboard on Slide 11. Again, we are pleased to see that they reflect a positive performance picture. All of our local taxes are 8.4% ahead of target, and that is an improvement of 2.4% above the prior month. We continue to see, again, as has already been stated, our local taxes that are performing ahead of target, real estate sales tax, business license, transient occupancy, and prepared foods. On the expenditure dashboard, we continue to see that things are performing in a favorable position, 7.6% below target. We continue to see that public safety overtime, CSA, and worker compensation are expenditure issues, while our solid waste costs and operation costs are trending favorably. Our salary lapse continues to trend higher than one year ago, as well as the prior three-year average, due to the level of vacancies that we continue to experience. Also, as it relates to prior months, the operating contingency balance is lower than in prior years, and that is similar to what we have shared with you for the past, at least the last two months, and we continue to monitor that as well. Moving to Slide 13, we look at our projections for key local tax performance in the current fiscal year, and today, we remain at approximately $9.9 million, or 4.7% ahead of the adopted budget in terms of the projection that we bring to you today, driven primarily by sales tax, personal property, prepared food and beverage, and delinquent collections, recordation, and probate taxes. On Slide 14, the net local impact for Roanoke City Public Schools remains at $3.8 million, and the city impact remains at $5.6 million. As we look at the potential disposition of these revenues that are performing ahead of target, on Slide 15, we, of course, turn our attention to the appropriation of funding as a result by formula. Roanoke City Public Schools would be allocated 40% of that local tax amount. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge would be allocated 3/8 of the transient occupancy tax. Civic Facilities would be allocated the increase in admissions tax. Funding would be set aside from the inspection fee to fund necessary Corrigan Building inspections. Tax received in excess of the current budget for personal property tax would be allocated to street paving activities. Other revenues would fund snow response costs and public safety overtime, currently 178% ahead of target. That is the conclusion of the FY '22 current status updates, and I'll pause here just to see if you have any questions before we present an update on the status of FY '23 development. I'm sorry?
Public safety overtime, do you have a number for that expense?
Do you have the actual? Yes.
Can you repeat that question? I have trouble hearing, basically because they're bashing to me. Go ahead.
I would like to know how much has been spent on public safety overtime.
Okay.
Yes, based on our budget, as you see here, the total budget is 987, almost 988,000 of our target currently of 645,000, 46,000. We've already actually experienced 1.8 million in overtime costs. Based on that trend, if that continues, we would be approximately 178% potentially over budget by the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Mr. Best Pitch?
If we could just stay with that slide for a minute, Ms. Merchant. At the bottom line there, for operating contingency, the FY '22 budget was 625,542, and the year-to-date target was 1.4 million, basically.
No, actually, the bottom of the slide, those captions do not apply to the top.
I can't hear you?
The column, the green row, right above salary lapse and operating contingency only applies to the bottom.
I'm sorry. You changed something out there. And on Slide 15, you were just on, snow response costs, what are we saying about that? I mean, it seemed like to me our snow response was not as heavy this year as it has been some years.
Well, we, our typical course of action is we only budget for one to two snow events, mild snow event, in the course of a year, and as we have experienced heavier snows costs than that, as well as a replenishing of the barn.
And one of those, if you remember, the one snow event we had actually lasted pretty much that entire week, so we were running overtime crews that entire time, so even though the number of events may not have been more than we had anticipated, the duration of those events ended up being so. And it was mostly in labor, less so in supplies.
No, that helped me. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. Let's stay with that one as well. With your street paving, you're using, you're saying personal property tax, is that you're looking at the funding that may come from the increase in the vehicles from the fair market, where they were trending upward because of not having the chip for the new vehicles to come? Is that what this money is anticipated?
It's anticipated based on the assessed value by the Commissioner's Office on the vehicles as of January 1.
The ones for this fiscal year, that's going to be the increase, that increase in personal property tax. So, is this a one-time, because it's supposed to be trending back down, so you're anticipating?
Yeah, so what we're doing in this instance is, because we do anticipate that it'll return to some kind of normal, whatever that, whatever that might mean in the future, we did not want to roll it into our base budget, so we're treating it as one-time. 40% of that, as Amelia has mentioned, of course, will go to the schools, so somewhere around, I think, 1.4 million of those dollars will go to the schools, and about 2 million will actually go into street paving, and it is budgeted as a one-time.
Yes, of that increase, 1,460,000, should this trend hold, would go to Roanoke City Public Schools.
Okay. And also, on, I believe it's Slide 11, do you have, you may not have this, and you could just give it to me later. I was wondering, looking, I was looking at your revenue projections that you had on your dashboard here, and I was wondering if you compared it to pre-COVID as 2019? Would you say that you were trending up or below when I look at your percentage?
We can get that information.
Okay, because I mean, we're looking at being conservative, so I was just wondering, are we near where we were in 2019, or are we far ahead, or are we still trying to catch up?
Okay. Okay, we'll get that for you.
And that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, anybody else got any question?
Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll proceed to Slide 16 and begin our discussion of the status of budget development for fiscal '23. As we look at fiscal '23 on Slide 16 and our local tax estimate, it now rests at an 8.3% increase, or approximately $17.4 million above the FY '22 adopted budget level for local taxes. The drivers here, of course, as you see, are real estate, transient occupancy, and some recognition of personal property increase due to the values continuing into fiscal '23, and our projections are that it will level off and decrease after that. Again, 17.4 million dollar increase year-over-year for personal property tax, I'm sorry, for local taxes in total. On Slide 17, the net local impact as updated for Roanoke City Public Schools, the transfer would increase by 6.7, 6.8 million dollars, leaving a residual $10.1 million for city uses for supplementals and inflationary cost increases and compensation. On Slide 18, our total estimate for FY '23 now stands at 323 million, 323.6 million dollars, a total year-over-year increase of 5.2% compared to the adopted FY '22 budget.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Oh. That's the Vice Mayor.
Ms. Merchant, I was looking for the plastic bag tax. Is that incorporated in one of these other taxes, or is it a separate? one of these other taxes, or is it a separate line item?
I'm sorry, what?
The plastic bag tax, is that going to show up in this, in FY?
It is not a separate line.
Does it, will it appear at all, or it's not enough to?
I do not believe there is a separate line in this total.
There's not, and what will, you know, I don't know, we haven't, we don't have enough performance, we haven't collected.
Right, 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 right.
And remember, it is, what you can use those dollars for are obligated to actually sustain the program, basically, to actually do the bags, but we can probably by time, trying to think of when we'll get our first report that would show those collections. I'm trying to think if we would have that by time budget approval actually took place, if we'd get the first, I think we will have the first reports of those, so we should be able to give you a sense of how that's performing.
Okay, just for FY twenty-three, right, we should start to see something.
Right, right.
Okay.
And if I'm remembering correctly, any revenue that we receive is restricted to its use.
It is, it is. I was just wondering where we would see it, so I would get an idea, because it doesn't appear that people are moving away from it relatively quickly, so I was just curious where we would see it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the intergovernmental line here, how much of that may still be a little bit uncertain due to the fact that the General Assembly has not completed their budget process? I mean, it, you understand, I mean, it could vary one way or the other, I guess, depending on where they end up.
It could. There are, thinking about specifics as we look at revenues related to our human services area, our HB five ninety-nine.
Right.
Any of the revenues associated with public safety, all of those are still contingent on actions of the General Assembly and others that we'll talk about as well.
Right, so the sooner they actually get their work completed, which they're behind schedule, obviously, then we'll have more solid indication on that line of where we are.
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, the budget proposal that will come to you all here in a couple of weeks will occur most likely before the General Assembly acts on their budget, so there still will be some unknowns, and as mentioned, as you've mentioned, Mr. Bestbitch, that includes those transfers, but it also includes fairly dramatic things, like what they may end up doing with the grocery tax piece of it. As Amelia mentioned, there's two amendments pending for five ninety-nine funding, which could actually work to our benefit, to actually help put more money into public safety. There's a number of items still that are pending that most likely will not get resolved by the state before we actually present the budget. Hopefully, it'll get resolved by the state by time you act on the budget, but there's no guarantee of that either, and so there are still some fairly sizable unknowns as they continue to do their work.
So we may have to end up doing the budget adjustment after the whole thing is over with, if they don't?
Yeah, especially if it's something significant, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, I'm going to turn the podium back over to Paul, and he's going to talk with us about the expenditure side of our budget development as it currently stands.
Yeah, I think as Paul gets up here, I just want, and there's a reason why I'm going to mention this piece, because it'll be the next slide that I think Paul's going to talk about, is you'll recall that we started with your help in the budget retreat process with this as indicating that our top-line objectives with any increase in revenue that we had was to further address compensation, more so than we have been able to do so in the past, and we've tried to maintain that all the way through the development of this budget, and you'll certainly see that as we work our way through, and that's the reason why we're starting with the compensation discussion and then moving on into the other expenditure enhancements that are identified as well. So, Paul?
Okay, thank you. So we've updated you on the fiscal year twenty-three revenue situation, and I'll now turn our attention to the fiscal year twenty-three expenditure side. We are required to adopt a balanced budget, so we often adapt to live within our revenue projections. You'll recall from the last briefing on March seventh, we had a gap of about four point eight million dollars at that time, and this presentation, I'll show you what steps we've taken to reduce this difference significantly. And we'll start off the discussion by mentioning what we have built into our compensation, keeping in mind that we currently have a compensation study in progress and will not see the results of that study until late in the summer. The budget you'll see today includes an estimate of five million dollars for a five percent pay increase. It also includes next phase implementation of the public safety step plan. We're estimating the implementation of the step plan to cost between one and one point four million dollars, depending on how far into the plan that we take it. So at this time, we've included six point four million dollars for compensation to account for these two aspects. It's important to point out, some compensation increases also increase our revenues, such as the case with Social Services, and the amount that we expect that we'll reimburse from them is about one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. As for our fifteen dollars per hour minimum wage adjustment, we plan to cover this either through the ARPA grant, which was originally planned through the end of fiscal twenty-three, or we will cover it through year-end funds if available. Slide twenty takes us to the overall general fund, basic expenditure, and associated adjustments. Since our last briefing, we've adjusted the retirement rate, contribution rate from sixteen point one percent down to fourteen point three seven percent. This resulted in a base savings of about one million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. We decided to place one quarter of this into our excess debt service budget, which ultimately helps fund one-time activities. Current adjustments, including the previously mentioned compensation adjustment of six point four million, totals seventeen point three million dollars. This now gives us a general fund total of three hundred and twenty-three million, nine hundred thousand approximately. In the coming slides, I'll provide more detail about what makes up this difference. For non-departmental adjustments, as I just mentioned, we increased our funding for debt by three hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars as a result of savings from the retirement rate reduction. Therefore, our current increase for fiscal year twenty-three is one million, three hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. We've also been able to decrease our funding for debt service at civic facilities and increase the funding for the subsidy by the same amount. The Civic Center admission tax, as well as GRTC or Greater Roanoke Transit Company, are currently level funded. Compensation is at six point two two five million, which reflects the six point four million that I spoke about earlier, net the revenue from the Department of Social Services that we also anticipate receiving. Workers' compensation and funding for reserves were originally at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each, but we've reduced these by half. The city manager contingency has historically been at one point five million, but we've reduced this by half a million as part of our balancing strategy. If possible, the reserves and contingencies will be restored using year-end funds. We have not adjusted our funding for salary lapse savings, but as we see continued and sustained levels of vacancies in the current year, this is an area we may look to next help us move closer towards a balanced budget. Slide twenty-two brings us to current balancing status and shows the adjustments that we've made since we last met in March. We increased revenues by eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in the areas of real estate and personal property. We've also made most progress through the expenditure budget adjustments of three point six million dollars, of which three point one million of those are related to the non-departmental category, which I just covered. This brings us to an out-of-balance currently of three hundred and ten thousand dollars and sixty-seven dollars, three hundred and ten thousand, sixty-seven. On slide twenty-three, we recap the adjustments made since our last briefing, and I won't read all of these because several are already mentioned, but I will highlight those not yet mentioned. Some of those would include the reduction of several fleet supplementals for parts, sublet vendor fees, and fuel. We've also reduced several supplementals, moving those to be funded through one-time sources instead of ongoing sources. And then lastly, we've increased some of our external agency funding as they've, they continue to finalize their own budget requests. Slide twenty-four takes us to the future considerations, and in the couple of weeks, we will bring you a balanced recommended budget. At that time, we will hand the baton off to you to review and consider the budget that we have presented. A lot can happen in a couple of weeks, but for now, the areas that we plan to look for further adjustments include adjusting the salary lapse savings budget to reflect true savings that we've seen, not just in the current year, but also in prior years. We will also continue to review and refine the supplemental requests, and another possible approach is to look for vacant positions that could potentially be unfunded. Of course, the last big unknown that we'll continue to monitor even after the recommended budget is presented is any potential actions taken by the General Assembly, as we just mentioned. I provided a list here of the items that are currently on our radar. I won't go through these, but just wanted to provide you the list of the things that we will monitor. Currently, the budget does not include any actions, it does not take any adjustments for these actions that may occur, but as they do, we will amend the budget, as was mentioned previously. And so at this time, I'll turn it back to Amelia to take us through our last couple
Okay. Our last attention item today is debt service, and we wanted to update you on where we stand. As you know, a debt issuance is planned for the very near future, beginning for us with meetings with our rating agencies, Fitch, S&amp;P, and Moody's on this Friday, April the eighth. Our plans are to issue traditional bonds and have made assumptions in collaboration with our financial advisors, Davenport, David Rose, and Joe Mason. We have a current budget of approximately eighteen million dollars for debt service, and as is our practice, we build debt service in advance of the year in which it is anticipated to be needed, such that all increases are not necessary in a single fiscal year. For fiscal year twenty-three, the budget currently includes an increase of one million, three hundred, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. As Paul mentioned, it is sourced from a decrease, that three hundred, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars is sourced from a decrease in the necessary retirement rate from sixteen point one to fourteen point three seven percent. By using this funding for one-time items, we are in effect holding it for subsequent necessary increases in the rate in future years, and that is a best practice. This results in a total debt service available of approximately nineteen point three five million dollars. Necessary debt service, inclusive of fleet management capital, is estimated to total fifteen point eight five million dollars. This will result in an excess debt service amount of three point five million dollars for next fiscal year and is used strictly for one-time items. On slide twenty-six, we see evidence where the department submitted one-time items to be considered for use of this funding, and the Budget Committee has reviewed those requests. The three point five million dollars is currently allocated as listed here on slide twenty-six. It will allow for one-time expenditures in the categories listed. One remaining allocation for percent for the art is in the process of being calculated based on the percent for art policy and the capital improvement program as it is finalized. Our next steps will be final balancing of the recommended budget, returning to present that budget on Monday, April eighteenth, followed by public hearings on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, beginning at seven P.M. Budget study scheduled for the morning of Monday, May second, followed by budget adoption on Monday, May ninth. That is the second Monday in May, a special meeting.
Okay.
And if needed, we can certainly provide you with copies of that calendar that was adopted in December.
All right, Ms. Cobb has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a couple of follow-up questions, so I'll try and remember where all of these are in the presentation. On page twenty-six, the only item that is TBD is percent for art. Is this in relation to the Roanoke Culture Endowment?
It is not.
It is not?
It is not. This is strictly the one percent of construction costs for eligible projects.
For public art.
That is allocated for cultural art.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that, if you remember, as we, that gets recalculated each year as we adopt the CIP, so we're going through that process now, based off the formula to arrive at what that number is.
Okay.
Yes, and if I'm correct, the endowment allocation is built into the budget as a base item.
Then on page twenty, and I apologize, I may just be misunderstanding here, when you talk about retirement contribution rate, is this, is this debt retirement?
I'm sorry?
On page twenty, at the very bottom, you talk about the retirement contribution rate change from sixteen point one. Is that debt retirement, or is that retirement rates for retirees of the city?
It's the retirement rate for active employees that has contributed to the retirement plan on behalf of employees.
Okay, does that in any way affect the COLA?
It is not.
Okay, and?
It is not. That would strictly be based on the compensation increase as it's finally determined, it would be calculated.
Okay, so that would, that would have a connection to the five percent that we're looking at? Okay.
Correct.
Under the, under public safety, and these are more just practical logistical questions, I appreciate our police department so much, and I know we've had to increase overtime, and some of that's probably related to increased patrol efforts. Do we know how that overtime is prioritized?
How it is prioritized in daily operations?
How the overtime is prioritized in terms of where it shows up in the community, or is that, I mean, is it strictly, is it mostly related to patrol, or?
It is, and also jail, and most of it's more reactive, so in other words, if there aren't enough people, they actually have to actually do it. There's some events also that require overtime, so it would be by that, so there's a limited amount that is tied to kind of target it overtime. We might have a special operation that we actually need to have folks contributing outside of their, or in addition to their regular work hours, it would be on that, but most of it's reactionary to whatever might be going on at the time that requires more forces to be deployed.
And then on the street paving, how, I know that we, we're on a schedule right now in terms of streets that are being regularly paved, and it's great to see the progress that's being made. In terms of this additional one-time funding that's going towards street paving, how will we identify? Will that be kind of who is already at the deferred list, or?
Right, we'll still use the same, the same approach, so the way we do our decisions regarding paving is based off of paving conditions, so we have an inventory of all of our streets and the current condition of all of those streets, and then those have kind of a point or rank order associated with those. So that gives us kind of our starting point, and then you may recall from previous presentations that we also then try to pave streets in kind of a neighborhood. What we don't want to do is pave one street, leave, and then come back the next year, pay the next street over, so we try to actually consolidate those in that area to do that work. So that approach will still be the same. What this will do is allow us to spend more money on it, so therefore get further on that list than we would otherwise do. We, we take bids early, so we'll take, right now, we're operating under bids we took last year, so we'll take bids again a little bit later this year to get the next round of pavement, and that's what these dollars will be. and that's what these dollars will be associated with as well.
Okay.
And we also have to balance that. Unfortunately, of course, we have increasing costs because of course paving uses petroleum products, and so those costs are of course increasing. Also here locally, we have a, there's always a limited capacity based off of our private paving companies as to how much work they can actually do, so that always balances against that as well. But we feel confident that those dollars that we've identified, the capacity is there and they'll be able to extend further down that list than we would normally be able to do something.
Excellent. And then the last one is regarding stormwater, and you partially answered this with the backlog of projects. How do we, how do we prioritize the, addressing that backlog?
The similar, I, I laugh a little bit because it's so extensive. I mean, the, the amount of capital that we can put toward those items is pretty limited. So a little bit, a little bit different than street paving in that many of those capital projects are very sizable. So think of the downtown, for example. We have very high, high level or high priority projects in downtown that we simply cannot afford. So that may cause us to go a little bit further down the list, on the downtown list, buy what we can afford and then work our way through. As we've shared with you all in other briefings, under our current structure and under the amount of funding that we receive from the state, we cannot make significant headway on some of those larger expenses, and that's an item we're going to have to continue to talk with you all about other options as we go forward. But it's a process similar to what we use with streets based off of condition and priority. It's just that backlog is so significant because the utilities only existed for a few years, so it's, literally has 100 years worth of projects that have, have never had funding attached to them.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, for no further questions, I got one question, I think I knew it. All right.
A follow-up on the one that Joe mentioned on your, um, street paving. When you do your street paving, do you, do you all work with the utility companies? Because there's nothing worse than once you pave a street and then a week later or so you have a utility cut.
Yeah, we do the capital, the capital teams here as well as with particularly the Water Authority, which is where most of those come, because most of the utilities are not in the street, they're, they're in the right of way, but not necessarily in the street. Most of the water, a lot of the water and wastewater is in the street, so we do coordinate those. Same is true on their side too, that they may, they have their own capital project, and so we try to sync those up, that if they have a major capital project that needs to be done, that may move a paving project up on the list as well so that we don't do exactly what you said, which is they go in and cut it and then we come back. That's why often you'll see and often you and we get complaints about this, where the utilities will come in and actually do some utility work several months ahead of our paving, and then they leave it in a temporary condition, waiting for our paving to come in behind it. But yes, those are, those are coordinated between all of those, all of those utilities. This, in this will, you know, we have not yet talked with the utilities about expanding this program, so this will put a bit of a strain on them in order to keep up with us as we go forward. But again, they've, they've been able to, to assist us in those efforts.
Now, do you all do follow-up with them once the utility cut is done? Because I noticed such as like on Frontier and Plantation, they have did a large utility cut and it has potholes now. And I know the, some of the residents have been asking, when will this be filled back in? So, so do you all follow back up to make sure that those cuts are repaid?
We do. A couple of years ago, actually, we changed the standards that they have to meet with those, and then we follow up with them. There's a, there's a set period of time that they're supposed to come back and do those improvements. One of the struggles that they've had as well is they do, as you can imagine, a lot less paving than we do, so they often are put to the back of the line by the private contractors that actually, that they contract with to do the work, but we do follow up with them too. And they have to do the repair based off of our standards so that we know that they'll last as they go forward with it as well. But there are often months that go between their temporary fix, which is often intended to be just that temporary, and their permanent fix as they go forward.
Yeah, so is the month, six months, nine months, 12 months?
Yeah, it should not be that long, but it can be a time.
But that's what we are finding over there off of Plantation. It's been about nine months.
Yeah, yeah.
And so they are, and it just keeps getting worse, and so they, they're wondering, is, are we forgotten or are they coming in? When are they coming? So I just said I would follow up.
Yeah, and we can, and we can certainly mention that one with the utilities, with the authority and have them look at it.
I'll talk with you further about the ones that I'm seeing. And the other one is on the one-time funding, on page 26, let me make sure I got the right one. No, I'm sorry, on page 23, under the expenditure adjustments since your last briefing, under funded supplements, the one-time sources, the planner two position, this is being used one time. Is that going to be two temporary positions or are you looking at making those permanent?
They are two permanent, they are two full FTE positions that have previously been funded as one-time. Our goal had been to incorporate them permanently into the FTE count, but we're finding it necessary to consider them continued one-time until some later point.
Yeah, the, these were two positions that we actually created when the comprehensive plan was underway, and now that we're transitioning into our neighborhood plans, we find that we still have this need. The challenge is, as you can imagine, hiring a full-time employee without retirement benefits and without certainty that their tenure lasts is not very, is not ideal. So we're trying to find a way to transition these folks into a more permanent status so that we'll have more success and actually retain. We've been pretty successful. One of the folks that was in this temporary was moved into a permanent role with the planning department, so we've benefited from some really good folks, but it's not, it's not a very good recruiting tool to say, we've got a job that might last for a couple of years, but we don't know how long, so we're trying to transition, transition these two positions.
Yeah, because the reason why I was wondering was because right now you're, you're still trying to balance your budget, and I was just wondering by trying to put these two positions in, would you have trouble in trying to maintain, to keep them in the budget where you're still looking at unfunded? You know, positions to balance the budget and then you have this one trying to, okay.
That was all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. My question is a pretty much easy one. I really feel I know the answer to it, but I want to ask you anyway, Mr. Spencer, you know, on page 19, I see where the 5% pay increase was proposed. There are some localities where the governing bodies have implemented a program where whenever the, whenever the employees get a raise, they get a raise. How, uh, how does that work? I mean, with, with us, I mean, does it try to prevent, not allow that, that to happen?
What, with council?
Yeah.
Uh, here in Roanoke, council has always established its salary by the code and has acted separately, so this would be different and separate from that.
Okay.
So we've, we've established council's salary, and I believe, I'd have to go back and double check and see if the code has been amended, but I believe we went and amended it in accordance with the state code.
That's correct. We're at the next.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that it looks like we're at a point where we do not move, and I know nobody on council gets a traveling allowance and gas, I don't have to tell you about how that's increased. It's just something I think that it looks like we can't revisit that, and it's, it gets costly. But I saw in, I think our neighboring county where they have set up where anytime there's employee raised, they get the raise. They get also the similar, similar raise.
And I can look into that and see how much flexibility we have remaining in accordance with city code, I mean with state code. Remember that we are a city so that there are specific limits established, plus we can look at other options as far as with the price of gas, and knowing that council members are traveling, there could be a travel allowance added.
Yeah, okay.
To that. I'd be glad to look and see what options are available for council and respond to you, Mayor.
Please, thank you.
Yes.
All right, Amelia, that completes it. Thank you.
Yeah, so in two weeks, we'll be back with a, a proposed balanced budget, and we will also be working with you all, as we have in the past, a scheduling, kind of two at a time meeting so we can review in more detail what actually is going to be submitted. Obviously, we've been able to cover a lot of the high points, but we want to be able to get into a little more detail with each of you as well.
Mr. Cowan, those meetings are going to take place prior to our, our next meeting?
They will take pla, I don't know, we'll have to, we'll check the schedule though.
It would be helpful if, if they could, that way we would, because I have a couple of questions I wanted to talk to.
Yeah, ideally, we'll have them take place before we present the, the budget. I think in the past, maybe we presented the budget, then we've had the meetings, I don't recall, but we'll work with you all on your schedules and what makes the most sense.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Thank you, Paul, also. All right, next item on the, well, I'm sorry.
This is our second briefing. This will be a, a faster briefing than the budget, so thank you all for that. As, as was indicated last month, we are going to each month bring to you an update on the, on the gun violence prevention framework, and that will always include an update on three different components of the framework. Just as a reminder, the framework focuses on law enforcement, justice, intervention, and prevention. Those, those are the categories that the focus again is placed upon. And aligned with that, you'll always have briefings from the Police Department, also from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, as well as from city staff that is working on the Star City Safe Initiative. So this is the second of those briefings. They're intended to be very quick, just provide you with basic information and allow you an opportunity to ask any questions that you might wish to do so. We will be going in similar order as we did last time. We'll start with the Police Department. Chief Roman is unable to actually be here today, but Captain Morris will be here and be able to go through that information. Then we will transition into the Star City Safe Initiative, and then we'll end with the Gun Violence Prevention Commission that Councilmember Cobb, as the chair of that commission, will be bringing forward with you as well. So with that, I'll ask Captain to come up and give you the, the update from the planning, from the Police Department perspectives.
Good morning, everyone. I'm just going to take this down so I'm not yelling at everybody out there. So in line with the chief's strategic priorities and, and guidance and vision, our job at the Police Department is to intercept, disrupt, and ultimately dismantle the violent crime in the city of Roanoke, specifically the gun violence. And in that, in that focus, we received 24 illegal firearms last month. We also served 735 warrants through March 29th, from, from March 1st to March 29th, and I have a breakdown of those if anybody would, would want to hear those afterwards. We also ran several special operations, and these operations focused on interdicting violent crime in geographic, geographical areas that experienced violent crime or high concentrations of violent crime. There were several incidents that were on the news as well, and I'm happy to say that the shooting at the Days Inn, Mr. Christopher Withers was arrested for that shooting, so we were able to track him down and arrest him. And then, of course, the incident at, at the school, at Addison School, the juvenile was, he was taken into custody immediately at that school, within minutes of us having done that. Also, it should be noted that the, the court procedures that go on for Roanoke City, we had several high-profile cases. DeAngelo Bonds was convicted of first-degree murder, and that was for the murder of Adriana Kiefer back in February of 2021. And then also William Ray was convicted last week, first-degree murder of April Barnicot and Eric Surfus, and that was in March of 2020. So it was great work by the investigators, great work by the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and we hope that that provides some measure of closure to those family members that are out there. And then also, we continue to reach out to the community with our reset deployment team. They were deployed four times last month in response to the homicide and multiple gunshot wounds that, that we experienced. The average number of volunteers who come out is about six, and they spoke with approximately 58 residents throughout the community that were experiencing that. Those residents that they came in contact with certainly expressed a common concern about the repeated violence and not feeling safe in their community. They eagerly expressed their concerns and commended the reset, reset volunteers. A small number seemed very uncertain and hesitant to engage in conversation, but the professionalism of the reset team definitely shone through. And as well, they made two referrals for mental health services due to the resulting trauma stemming from the violent crime. So they don't just reach out for the violent crime, but they also offer those services that go out there. So those are the highlights. I have some other additional information. I'll, I'll stick around if anybody wants to dig into them a little bit more for you, but I will yield my time to the next person.
Mr. Cowan. Yeah, um, thank you, Captain, for that, for that briefing. Mr. Cowan, is it possible to have a written report? Because you know, as members of council, people are always asking us, what are we doing?
Sure.
And certainly with, with the summary, we can respond intelligently and, you know, try to convey some of the things that the Police Department is actually doing.
Yeah, we can certainly provide any of the reports that you hear today, if you want any of those, and certainly we can do that with Captain Morris.
Yeah, just hard to write it all down. That would be helpful.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you all today?
Great.
Morning. Um, so last month, when I met with you all, I kind of gave a, an overall picture of what the Star City Safe Initiative is. I also let you know where my role works in combination with the effort. Today, what I'm going to do is kind of give a, an overview of the April activities that are coming up specifically around spring break, share some highlights with March, and then talk a little bit about funding. So with Parks and Recreation this year, or this in April, what we have coming up is a youth development spring break camp. This is going to be all day during that week of spring break, starting on April the 11th, so from 7:30 AM to 6 o'clock PM. There's going to be open gym collaboration with the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Team at Eureka Park as part of the Star City Safe Initiative. That's going to be 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM all week long. Additionally, there's going to be some hiking opportunities. That staff will take the youth to Douthat State Park in the, during that spring break time period. In the libraries, through the month of April and ongoing, we've increased the meals served at the Melrose Library. Additionally, Feeding Southwest Virginia has increased their support and providing food and snacks all week long. Now, that's not specifically toward the spring break, that, that's during the week moving forward for, over at the Melrose Library. With the spring break initiatives with the, the libraries and the Star City Safe Initiative, there's going to be petting zoos, jewelry-making activities, storytime, painting, multiple movie nights, bingo, pizza, popsicles, and even an electronics club that's going to be taking place at the Melrose Library, and this is in addition to the increased hours that the Melrose Library has moving forward with the Star City Safe Initiative. Most recently, in Human Resources, the second apprenticeship program finished up with the teen apprenticeship. All of those who were enrolled in that program completed the orientation and have been placed with city jobs. Those departments or areas that the youth are working are the Melrose Library, the Raleigh Court Library, the Hotel Roanoke, Planning, Building, and Development. That has, that has begun to yield success. You know, there's definitely been some, some learning experiences for the teens or the youth, getting to work on time, breaks and things like that, but they're, they're working through that. So some of the March highlights that I wanted to bring to your attention, youth were taken to get some free haircuts. They were taken to the Harlem Glow Trotters. The youth were taken to the Ruthie Carter Afro Tourism Costume Design Exhibit with the Toddman Museum. So those were some of the, the highlights that I wanted to bring to your attention for, for March. So lastly, I kind of wanted to go over some funding. You all know that out of the $2 million of the Star City Safe, uh, the Star City Strong Recovery Resiliency Advisory Panel, they allocated $2 million for, for violence interruption. $250,000 of that went toward the Star City Safe Initiative, and I'm just going to kind of give you an overview and more specific information regarding the, the funding will come in that report, but just to kind of give you an idea of some of the upcoming funding or activities that will, that will go on with those dollars. And I won't, like I said, I won't give you too much detail, it'll take a little while to go through that, but so funding's going to be going toward the libraries. That is for those extended hours to extend. That is for those extended hours to extend all the way through December of 2024. And then some part-time library assistance to work with the, the reset officer. Then there will be some supplemental program funding with the Melrose Library. And again, to extend those hours into December of 2024. Parks and Recreation, there's going to be two Washington Park basketball tournaments throughout the FY '23-'24 year. Parks and Recreation, on Mondays and Tuesdays at the Washington Park Pool, will be free entry for those wanting to participate. There's going to, money going to Lloyd Merchant with the reset, to focus on mentoring, kind of train the trainer, and refreshing concepts toward that. Eureka Park, the extending of those facility hours. And then three more of the teen apprenticeship programs, at least three for the FY '23-'24 year. And then, and of course, wages for those youth. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. It's best.
Oh, that's fine, Mr. Mayor. I, I thank you, Andrew, for that update on that. I guess, I'm really curious about how the youth are identified to participate in this program. And specifically about, do we have a way, working with the schools or working with other agencies, to identify youth who we know probably don't have a chance to participate in a lot of these kinds of activities that you've just described otherwise? And, and I realize this is very hard to predict, but, but youths who appear to be perhaps headed in the direction of trouble, and we're trying to turn them around. You know what I'm saying? I mean, how do we, how do we pick the youth that this is going to benefit the most to ultimately reach our goal of putting kids in a positive direction so they don't end up with gun violence or any of that sort of stuff?
Sure, that's a good question. As far as the teen apprenticeship program, those youth are really identified with Lloyd Merchant or with Chris Roberts. So those are the youth that they're working with one-on-one as it relates to prevention and intervention and those efforts.
So they're basically making the referrals?
I'm sorry?
They're basically making the referrals from the youth that they identify that, yeah. I mean, I think they're probably in a pretty good position to do exactly what I was just talking about.
Yeah, definitely. You know, but there has been a lot of interest from, from youth who may not fit into, to that category as they've been working with Chris or Lloyd on those, on those efforts. So there definitely has been some conversations about other ways that we can reach youth that maybe are not at risk as, as those are.
And let me just say, I think that's not a bad approach either, because I think it's good to have a mix of kids. You know, you get, take all the kids that are already in the most trouble or appear to be headed to most trouble and put them together, you may just be creating more trouble. But if you have some, some, a mix of kids who seem to be doing better in terms of their development as youth, then that, that's probably a good thing to have, too. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Let me go around the horn here. Let me start with, no, I want you to go, then I go to Ms. Moon Reynolds, and then I end up with the Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Ms. O'Brien, is it possible to have a list of all the activities that are going to be happening during the spring break?
Sure.
And have you promoted that with the schools as well?
As far as with the schools, I don't know how well it has been promoted.
Okay.
I know the schools are aware of the activities that we're doing, but, but yeah, we can get you a list.
Most of the, most of the events are held at the library, and you all have been provided the flyer that lists all of those events. That was in a weekly update, a couple, a couple of updates ago. There are some events that are occurring at the Eureka Center and a few of the other areas that are not on that list, and so we can certainly get that, get that for you as well.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Bestbitch was saying as identifying youth for the program. I think it's a great program. I did have an opportunity to stop by there last Wednesday to see, you know, who all was in the program. And my question is, what type of outreach are you doing to, to reach kids such as over in Southwest, in Hurt Park? Since everything is, most of the activities are at Melrose, at Melrose Library, what plan do you have when you're doing your outreach to engage other than Lansdowne? Because I think the kids that were there were primarily Lansdowne kids and not on down the inner city, like I said, over in Hurt Park, or even down Cherry Hill or any of those areas, Lincoln Terrace. So what, what plan do you have to try to engage those kids, at-risk kids? Even southeast, I know you have Belmont, but the activities happen to be at Melrose. So what is, under this Star City Safe initiative, what are you doing to engage those kids?
Sure. That's a good question. Right now, the focus has really been on the Melrose area. We are trying to engage with all of the youth over there, and that's to, you know, we probably could up the, I guess, engagement and the communication for different areas. As it, but most of the activities will be held at the Melrose Library.
One of the struggles we're having is, not surprisingly, the need exceeds our capacity. A really good example is in Raleigh Court. If you go to, I mean, most people don't think of Raleigh Court, but if you go to Raleigh Court, pretty much after every school day, there is a large collection of teenagers that actually congregate at the library, which is great, it's a safe space. But we would love to be able to have the resources to actually reach that population as much as we've been able to do Northwest. And as you say, Councilmember, also at, like Belmont, you'll see the exact same thing. And so, you know, this, this program is in its kind of second phase, and definitely the needs are exceeding what we have in terms of resources.
Yeah, the needs are definitely there. And I guess my concern was just trying to meet the needs with regards to transportation, of trying to, how do you get, go about getting, of meeting them where they're at to meet, to meet their needs.
Right. So that, I mean, transportation has been one of the, one of the items that we're struggling with in general. We don't have a lot of staff who are, I guess, qualified, not really, I don't want to use that word qualified, but they maybe, we have not done the background check for their driving records and things like that. So that, that is one thing that, that we've looked into, but we, we are struggling with transportation itself on how to get the youth to even the activities that we're taking them with.
Okay. With regards to the hiking, you talked about the hiking and doing the, to take youth to Douthat State Park. Where are you going to, where are you looking to get these youth from? Are they coming from the Melrose area, too?
These are the youth that are likely participating with the Parks and Rec activities through the Spring Break Initiative. So if they've signed up to take any of those classes. But additionally, they could sign up to just do the hiking experience.
So this is through the play?
Yes, that's through Play Roanoke. Play Roanoke.
Okay. And, let me see. The extended hours that you mentioned for Eureka Park, are these in addition to the spring break where you talked about last, following your reset mentorship under the funding of the $2 million? Then you mentioned the extended hours for Eureka. I assume that was the 6:30 to 9 o'clock with open gym? Is that past the spring break time period, or is it?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the, during the spring break period is where the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Team are working with the Eureka Park staff to extend those hours for that specific week. Additionally, through the rescue funds, that Parks and Recreation will be extending the public hours at Eureka Park for the open gym. So that will be going, that will be ongoing through the FY '23-'24 year, specifically during the summer hours, Christmas breaks, and spring breaks.
And it still would be 6:30 to 9 o'clock?
Those hours, likely, it'll be during that time period.
Okay.
Can I, can I just follow up on that? Ms., I wonder if you still have the floor?
No, sir, you go ahead.
Follow up on that question.
That's fine.
6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m.?
6:30 to 9:00 in the evening.
Okay, that's, man, that's, those hours are late.
Spring break.
In summer.
In summer.
Well, the reason I'm saying that, because we have gotten a lot of questions from some people about the hours of Eureka Park, and that the gym is open, even spring break, I think that's late in the, that's late in the evening.
To 9:30.
To 9:00.
The hours.
It doesn't really get dark until about.
Yeah, to around, yeah, 8:30, 9:00.
Well, and the hours that we're using, both at Eureka as well as the libraries, are intentionally late, because what we have found is if, if during the hours of 6:30 and 9:00, these opportunities don't exist, those children are still out. They're just not out in these spaces where we have the mentors and we have the other folks that are present to try to provide some structure. So they are. Now, we did run into some issues, this will not be a problem in the summer, but we did run into some issues early in the year. At 9 o'clock, it's dark. And being able to get them safely back to where they came from has been somewhat of a challenge. Summer is not as much of an issue because it's still relatively light, but it is definitely late. But it's, it's late by design to keep it.
No, I'm just thinking, what are they doing during the day? I mean, during the normal 12, 1, 2, 3. But anyway, that, I just noticed that. Thank you, Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Yeah, I just had, I just had a comment with regards to, I had, when I went to, to, just to see what was going on at the library, I had an opportunity to talk with three young ladies. And I asked the question, what brings you over to the library? And they said they use it as a meeting place, even though they live within a block apart from each other. They go to three different schools. One go, went to Madison, one went to Addison, and one went to Woodrow Wilson. And I just found that interesting. They live in the neighborhood, but they don't get to see each other, except at the library. And they usually will hang out there. And then if they have money or passes, they come downtown. And they ride the scooters.
That's neat.
And they said that's their fun time. And I was just thinking, this was really just eye-opening for me to say, okay, you use this as a meeting place just to have fun and to just conversate. So I was really appreciative of the extended hours that the library has, so they have somewhere to go.
That's good. I appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. O'Brien, I just have a question. I know that we're focusing on the at-risk, but there are so many students out there that are not at risk, that don't have the opportunities because of, they don't have the income, or their parents don't have the income, and they're really good students. I know that Mr. Bestbitch stated that, you know, maybe mixing them together might not be a good idea, but certainly we need to create some opportunities for those students who are, and I know this is gun violence prevention, but this is still prevention, because if they're good kids and, and we keep them engaged in some positive activities, that might work. But do we, is there any funding, or can we stretch it a little bit to include some of those students who would love to participate, who are not at risk?
I mean, I, I definitely hear you, and all of this is toward prevention and intervention efforts. As far as the funding, I don't, I probably need to.
Yeah, I think, keep in mind, and I guess, I'll back up and remind everybody what this is in a second, but also keep in mind that those extended hours at the libraries, the extended hours at the recreation centers, those are open.
Those are open.
All the basketball tournaments we talked about, those are open. The things that are really targeted are those opportunities at, for example, the apprenticeship programs here with the city in terms of employment. Now, we do have a summer youth employment program, which is not limited to at-risk individuals. So these are, these are services, so most of the services that we're talking about are open to anybody. Any youth can participate in them. There are certain ones that we're actually taking references out of those efforts to try to select the folks that are most in need to be able to connect to these other, these other kinds of resources.
Yeah, I guess we have to figure out a way to find out how, how they access these resources and how we're disseminating this information. And that was my last point. That's, the information you all are providing is really good information. I don't know where to go find it, but if you could bring it to us and summarize it, that's really helpful, because I think a part of our, our problem here on council is that they're saying there's a lack of communication. And sometimes we can't communicate what we don't know or we don't have. So that would be helpful for us until we figure this communication problem out.
Sure.
So if you could, I would appreciate it, Ms. O'Brien. And we're going to get some personal secretaries here soon. I think Mr. Bestbitch also mentioned that. We're going to get some personal secretaries. We won't have to do this. Can I get one?
Is that it, too?
No, no, we were talking about that would be helpful for council, because we have to do a lot of digging and research, and so that.
What I'm saying is that it is a good idea, Vice Mayor.
It is a good idea. Not, it's, what the bad idea is to limit to only those youth who may be the most at risk, because if they're trending towards trouble and they're the only ones that get together, that may just lead to more trouble. So it's better to have a mix.
Okay, I'm so glad you said that, because I was like, well, maybe we need to, yes, thank you. And, and that would be helpful for the other kids, because it's, it's all about prevention, and we, you know, yeah.
And I guess.
And I just, excuse me, and I just wanted to clarify, the three ladies that I was referring to, they lived in the Upper Villa Heights, so they were not part of public housing. So that's what really interested me was why they were coming. And they were saying that's why they hang out there, which was, shows you an inner, interaction of public housing and the community.
Absolutely.
Kids getting together.
Yeah, I guess before, before we transition to the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, I just had two, two things I wanted to add to Andrew's report. One of those is, just again, to remind, and Andrew did this last time, remind you all what the Star City Safe Initiative is, which is, this is a group of directors from the city staff who came and said, we want to do more to support the work that the police are doing in response to gun prevention. This is not a city program per se, this is not an initiative that we've had in the budget or any of those kinds of things. We've been able, in one instance, to take year-end savings and apply it to this. And in the second instance, we've used some ARPA dollars to be able to actually push over that. So, so some of the questions you're asking are actually really more appropriate questions for how we fund Parks and Recreation, how we fund libraries, and those things through our regular budget, not as much through this, this particular initiative. The, the other thing I wanted to mention was, you know, some people may be sitting out there saying, well, you know, we're having basketball games, and we're having events at libraries, and we're having, you know, job creation for teens here at the city. How does that fit into this, into this effort at gun violence and into this framework? So let me give you just one anecdotal example of this, and I think I've shared this with you all privately before, but, and, and some of this is coming from a letter that I received from someone at the, that deals with our juvenile folks here as well. And I haven't even shared this with Chris yet, but I will, because it was a letter about Chris, about Chris's performance and the work that he does with the youth and gang violence. So we had an individual that was relocated to our community because they relocated by the courts to our community because of the situation that they were in, in another community, someone that was definitely at risk and likely already engaged in activities that led to gun violence and other, other types of things. That person came to our community, they were connected into the work that Chris is doing. Chris was able to connect them to a mentor, as well as connecting them to, and their family, to our language services specialist, because they did not speak very much English. The family spoke no English, and they were connected to those, those resources. That person then was connected into the job training program, the apprenticeship program that we have. They were employed by the city for a brief period of time in doing that. And the reason that the letter was provided to me, to provide to Chris, is because that person's, as, by their words, that person's entire life has been turned around as a result of these efforts. So even though people may scratch their heads and say, how does basketball fit into this? How does going to, you know, a hockey game fit into this? All of those fit in, and they're all opportunities for folks that are mentors or, or law enforcement or others to engage in a positive way to try to actually move them in a different direction. So again, I just, I just mentioned, that's just one anecdotal, and I am confident there are dozens and dozens others as we go through as well. And then the last report is actually from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission.
Thank you, Bob. Well, there's a lot. There's absolutely a lot, but I'm just going to pick out a few things, and I will share this report with you all. I want to start with what you just finished with, and that's relationships. Everyone is extremely frustrated by the incidence of gun violence in our community, and they look to us for, how are you going to solve this? How are you going to stop it? What's going to stop it and change it is relationships. And how we see each other, how we respond to each other, how we resolve our conflicts differently. And that's a long-term, it's like a long-term relationship that we have to work on. Had an opportunity to have a monthly meeting with Chris and Antonio, their, their team, just to hear some of what they're doing. And during our, our conversation last week, there were a couple of things that I wanted to share with you. One was a young man, I, I don't remember what age he is. One was, a young man, I don't remember what age he is, he may be middle school or high school, but he was at an event that's a collaborative effort at Melrose Library, which brings together mentors and youth apprentices. And the kids were all talking about how they've experienced transformation in their lives because of these efforts. And Antonio was, I don't think he was even in the room, but he was visible. And this young man kind of pointed in his direction and said, you see that man over there? He saved my life. So it's not just about Antonio or Chris, it's about all of us, and the ways in which we connect our youth and their families with these resources to transform their lives. And that's what's going to make the difference in the long term. A couple of things that the team is working on, and Chris is here, I really should have you say all of this, because you're in the heart of it, but they're working on developing community healing circles, which are really critical. There's so much trauma in our community right now, not only recently, but historically, around gun violence. And on April 14th, they're planning a community healing circle that will be facilitated by Antonio and the team and other partners at Eureka Park Rec Center. And the idea is for this to move around to different places in the community, to reach different segments of the community. Antonio is also developing a seven-week program called Rites of Passage, and this is going to help youth focus on meditation, stress management, breathing, nutrition, physical exercise, all of those things that absolutely have to work together to kind of recalibrate youth in how they see themselves and how they work together. We've worked with the team and a number of youth service providers to have the first of our youth roundtables. We did this over two days in two different classes, the African-American cultural, African-American culture and contemporary issues class at William Fleming High School. There were about 60 youth that were able to give voice to what they're experiencing, what they need, what's working. And I have to tell you that, to a person, particularly in the young men's class, every one of them who spoke talked about how this relational work has been transformative in their lives. They came into the class feeling angry, frustrated, hurt, and with this empowerment, have, are contributing in ways in the life of the community and in their families that they never imagined they could, in very positive and healthy ways. And one of the young men talked about how, and he was really challenging the other students when he said, look, when we're in a park, if we're throwing down litter, if we're vaping, if we're, you know, whatever we're doing, our younger siblings and others who are playing there see that. Our role, we have influence, and our actions are absolutely observed by other children and by other people. And so it's important for us to be leaders in this effort, not to throw things on the ground, not to vape, not to do these things that might lead younger children to decisions that could harm them. And I was really inspired by that, and some of that has come about because of this new understanding, identity, purpose, belonging, some of the very reasons we identified that kids are drawn to gangs. This was counter to that. This was a different way of seeing themselves and moving around in the world. So I want to commend our team for really working hard on that. A couple other things I want to mention, this, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission is working with Family Service of Roanoke Valley. We've created a social-emotional learning curriculum to engage with students at a very early age, to have a better understanding of their feelings, how to navigate those feelings, how to name them, how to work through them in positive ways. On April 13th, from 1:00 to 2:30, we're having a training webinar for any youth service providers, faith-based organizations in the community. This has been sent out to over 100 of these youth service providers and faith-based organizations in the community. I'll share the flyer with you all. It's really an introduction to an eight-to-10 session curriculum that is very empowering. It will be piloted in a lot of our after-school programs. The reading program at Lincoln Terrace, which we hope to expand to other elementary schools, that continues to grow. We have close to 40 volunteers working with about 50 students to help them increase their reading skills and levels. We have just completed an RFP process and hope to begin work with an agency to help us develop a comprehensive gun violence reduction marketing campaign that will last over a number of years. This is not only public awareness, it's about reaching youth in the multiple ways that they need to be reached, and communicating with them, with citizens, with partners, to reduce violence in our community. We are also receiving applications for the 100 Community Peace Builders Program, which is training citizens in conflict resolution, de-escalation, mediation, to not only work with families, with neighbors, in the, to preempt some of these situations of conflict and to work to resolve them in healthy ways. We are increasing access to trauma counseling and mental health support through funding, not only through Chris's team and Lloyd's team with Reset, but a counselor has been placed at Jamestown in the Housing Authority, and is there several days a week and available for one-to-one counseling. We're also, we just submitted a grant for Title II funding to place a second person at Lansdowne as part of the Envision Center, and we should hear about that in the next month or so. The last thing I'll share with you is that the mini-grants and the Violence Interruption Grants total $500,000. That grant application process closed on March 31st, and by my last count, we had 40 applications, 40, from community partners, and every one of them is collaborative in nature, which is an extraordinary response. Our community really cares and is invested in being part of the solution. So I think that's really exciting news. We will be reviewing those, and at our next meeting of the commission, which will be April 12th at 5:30 PM at Melrose Library. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm going to, I've got all of this, I'll email it to you this afternoon.
Let me start the discussion of questions, and let me commend this cause for the work that he's been doing, and Angie also, in terms of the initiative that we have. And there's some great things that we've got going, especially for the long term. But who I went into when I go to Food Line in Crowe is the 18 through 40 people. And I have people ask me about, how about the short term? What do we got? And I talk to them about something, then they offer me some solutions. Listen, how about handball courts, which doesn't take much to do, but a lot of guys, especially coming out of prison, did a lot of handball. And I think that's something, I haven't talked to Michael Clark about, but that's something that we could put up, and it's very, you know, they play a lot of it, unlike pickleball, which they have it, why not, this is handball. But the point I want to make is, we got to think, and I'm thinking in terms of midnight basketball or something, but that's an age group that we've got to look for, because they're the ones, in many cases, that are pulling the trigger, they're the ones that looking for something to do also. So it's short-term, and that's what I'm saying, because, and some of them, I probably helped get here from institutions, but they need, we need to think about those as we go forward, because they're the ones that need something also to do. And I think it's, I think we need to consider those people, those individuals. And just one other thing, on the Violence Interrupters, which I think, and I had a conference with mayors, that has worked very well on a lot of cities, a lot of big cities. Mayor Lightfoot up in Chicago, and the mayor down in Fort Worth, Texas, and Dallas, Fort Worth, has utilized that Violence Interrupters. And hoping we can get some people, especially some people, some of the people who are applying that have worked with, to a degree, the peacemakers that have an understanding of certain things, and I, you know, I think there's some talent out there, and I'm hoping that they will apply to do those kind of things. But good report, I think we're heading in the right direction with our long-term piece. I'm just concerned with short-term, and I'm talking about 18 to 40. You'd be amazed at the number of folks out here that, and I'm sure the officer will realize, some of the people they're picking up, hitting that age category, ex-offenders, and we have a lot of ex-offenders in our city. They're coming. So that's all, I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, and I just actually wanted to thank you for that, because one of the ways that they can help in the short term is through the mentoring program. And I would encourage them to reach out to Chris, who can work with them. He's got a group called Mind Movers. These are folks who have been previously incarcerated, who are giving back positively to the community and making a difference. And that's a very short-term way that they can be involved. The other thing I wanted to share with you is that we know that the new Attorney General is very focused on Operation Ceasefire, as, and I just wanted to let you know that in my conversations with his office, Roanoke is doing already, and has been for some time, all of the components of Operation Ceasefire. We've got a really solid framework for that, and so with new funding that's going to be available through the Attorney General's Office and the General Assembly, that's going to really help us supplement that work, not only for the work the Police Department is doing to enhance that, the opportunity for an added special prosecutor on the enforcement side and prosecution side, but to supplement the work we're doing in the community as well.
Thank you. How about advising the Attorney General? It'd be nice when he comes to town to talk about gun violence and what we're doing to at least let city administration or council know that he's in the city.
Yeah, well, we, that's been addressed.
So...
And he is very aware of what we're doing. I think because the conference was a DCGS conference, it was, in fact, I've heard directly from the AG's office that that was not an intentional oversight, and that they are grateful for the work that we're doing, and we look forward to meeting with him in person when he's here again soon to talk about what all we're doing.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Sanjay Zhan?
My question, my, I have a comment for Captain Morris, if that's possible.
Okay.
I just want to let you know, I went on a ride along a week ago, and I just want to tell you, it was really eye-opening. I had an opportunity to tour the Police Department and all the different settings that they have, and also, I spent a lot of time, I mean, from 8:00 to 6:00 in the morning out in Northwest, so it was an eye-opening experience. I had a chance to see how the officers engaging in different policing efforts and how professional they were. I'm really blown away, and I just want to say thank you. And I also saw firsthand how they're doing, they're multitasking with very little resources. So please thank the chief and everyone.
I will, thank you so much for that, ma'am. And I know Councilmember Cobb has his ride-along scheduled on the 15th, and Ms. Moon, I'll have Lieutenant Boswell reach out to you for yours as well, okay?
But it was a wonderful experience, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Green Willis, Captain.
All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, Ms. Smithman? That concludes it. All right, we will stand in recess for a closed meeting, and we'll reconvene at 2:00 PM here in Council Chamber. Thank you.
The adoption of prolonged grief disorder was driven by data from two research groups, one based in a school of social work here at Columbia, led by Kathy Shear, and another a group led by a sociologist, Hallie Prickerson, at Cornell Medical School. So all kinds of people contribute, and I agree with the question, or should be able to contribute to this process.
Dr. Insal, you're involved with several companies, including Alto Neuroscience, that are developing technology to find biomarkers for mental illness. Where does this research stand?